If you're willing and able, would you be so kind as to consider standing for the invocation and likewise for the pledge of the flag?
Dear Lord, we come here to you this morning asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions out of the fact and assistance of Henry County. Amen.
I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the regular meeting Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine o'clock a.m. Tuesday, September 2, 2014, come to order? Do we have somebody that would like to consider moving in a direction that would accept the agenda as published?
So move.
Have motion District Three?
Second.
Second from District, I didn't get a voice like, District Four. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the city correction, not city corrupt. But the county clerk, prior to the beginning of this meeting, you must sign your name, address, and specify the topic you wish to speak about, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. Only have one, is that correct? I'd like to recognize Mr. Bill Tony. Mr. Tony, if you'll come up, you've got five minutes. State your name and address for the records, please.
Bill Tony, sixteen fifty-two, Highway one fifty-five north, McDonough. I'd like to ask about the legal department moving the attorney, firing our county attorney and hiring an outside firm. I've done a Freedom of Information on all the emails of most of the commissioners. I've read thousands of emails. I've seen how much we use the attorney, more than I ever thought that you would. I feel like that putting it on an outside firm is gonna be devastation to the county. I think Latonya did, I've read her work, I've seen how she operates, I think she's done a great job for the county. I think moving it to the outside is a definite mistake. I think y'all need to please reconsider what y'all have done to this. And I'd like to also say that, I'd like to ask the question, was it put up for a competitive bid, or was it just, you know, people that you know, or how did y'all come up with the attorneys? How did y'all pick them? And was it the right move? I'm asking again, please reconsider bringing Latonya back to the legal staff here. I just can't believe y'all did it. I really can't believe you did it. Thank you very much.
Next, we recognize we have a presentation regarding a request to approve a temporary right of entry and maintenance agreement for a historical marker. Georgia Civil War Heritage Trail Representative, Mr. Singh, Mr. Steve Longkrier, and Mark Pollard exhibit one in your book. Good morning. If y'all will come up and state your name and...
Morning, Chairman Smith and members of the commission. My name is Steve Longkrier. I'm the founder and executive director of a nonprofit five oh one C organization, five oh one C three organization called Georgia Civil War Heritage Trails. I believe Ms. Mathis was kind enough to pass out some red folders, which hopefully you've at least had a glance, a chance to glance at before the meeting, which gives additional background information. I won't take the time here. I know your time is limited to go through it, but I'm certainly here to answer any and all questions you might have. We are a historical education organization, also heritage tourism organization. We're working very closely with the state tourism department, who has endorsed our project. This is a statewide project. If you've seen some of the handouts that were prepared for this meeting and also the brochure that's in the red folder, you see that this is a long, very involved project involving a lot of local jurisdictions, county and city level, all throughout the state. The particular event that involves this marker, I asked Mark Pollard, who wrote the text for it, to come, be prepared to answer any questions y'all might have along that line. But basically, as you know probably better than I do, a good part of Sherman's Army came through McDonough, came through Henry County. We're trying to tell the story factually. We're not slanting it one way or the other. We're telling it factually for educational purposes and also to try to encourage tourists to come to this area and see the history that was made here. You may say, well, gosh, we're not, you know, we're not a battlefield, but, well, you've got a battlefield just west of town, but I mean, we're not a battlefield here at McDonough. But I disagree in the sense that history is made in a lot of places besides just battlefields. And there are a lot of historical buildings, houses, churches, railroad crossings, you name it, that people have already indicated they would come and see if they know about it and they know where they are and they can read the history about it. Again, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. The maintenance, the right-of-way agreement is something that Georgia DOT requires. They are the main sponsor of our project. Fourteen years ago, Mark, when this project first began, this has taken a lot of coordination, a lot of bureaucracy at the federal and state level to pull all this together. But fourteen years ago, Mark and another member of our organization appeared before this commission and requested involvement of the commission and also approval of seventy five hundred dollars in funds to help pay for this marker and two other markers and also some of the other things that are along with this project. That was approved fourteen years ago, so we're not here to ask for any more money. We're just asking permission to now finally place the marker where we said fourteen years ago we were gonna put it. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? The only question that came up recently, recently, could have been last year, was whether or not it actually, Henry County owns that particular piece of property. And I know some say yes, some says no. But I know GDOT doesn't have a significant problem with this. And, but anyway, I sent a notice out several months ago to the board and we stay where we're at now. They haven't approved it, disapproved it. I don't know if it's any interest in it. But anyway, I'm... Anybody else want to make a comment?
Only question I had this morning, and I talked to Steve, I just wanted to make sure that the city folks have been talked to, and he said they had, and they don't have a problem with this, and I think we need to move forward with it.
We are required by DOT to have one of the local jurisdictions that are involved with this project to be our sponsor, since we are a nonprofit organization and not a local government jurisdiction, and that is Whitfield County. Dalton is the county seat. They are sponsoring this for the entire state, and that's quite a responsibility on their part, and we're very thankful for them for doing that. A member of their staff contacted the city. I don't know the exact, you know, the exact verbiage or conversation, but I do know that there was apparently not any problem. As far as DOT is concerned, they, I asked them to look through their records, because the roadwork that was done around the square, what, ten or twenty years ago maybe? I'm not sure exactly when. Gene Moore said it was a while ago, when I asked him, a number of years ago. They could not find any record to verify that they still own that spot.
Well, by record, I know that I've established that Henry County Board of Commissioners owns the square itself. Now, how much outside of the wall of the square, I don't really know. I don't know if they own the sidewalk. Now, City McDonough in that area owns nothing. I mean, they agree that they own nothing, but in nineteen eighty-five or eighty-three, Henry County gave the City of McDonough a long-term lease, and they control the park. They don't own it, but they control the square, and anybody that does something gets permission. But in this case here, to put something permanently, then the Board of Commissioners would have to sign off on that. But Commissioner Barnes said, City of McDonough, did they indicate as a group they don't have a problem with that?
I didn't talk to anybody from the city. I had asked Steve and him, if they'd talked to somebody from the city.
Okay, so in group form, you're saying the city, basically unanimously, is approval of this, is that what we're saying?
I'm not aware that the city has officially said one way or the other, as far as a vote of the council. I know Whitfield County Board of Commissioners, their staff member contacted the city and has talked to them about it. But also another, from what I've been told, that because this is outside of the wall, which is the main part of the square, that that may have a difference, that may have some difference in whether or not the city feels like they even have a part in it, because it's outside the wall, which is what I've been told, is the area, inside the wall is the area that they supposedly have management authority of.
Unless somebody's willing to do this, why don't we do this? Why don't we, I wouldn't say table it, because I don't, it wasn't anything on the resolution to approve or disapprove it. But just let Commissioner from District Three, that's his district, and let him coordinate something with the city for McDonough, and just make sure that we all one accord before we do this. Would that meet the board's approval? And open it up for a later date for discussion? If not, somebody put something on the table for a more significant dialogue.
I would like for us to go ahead and move forward with it. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve this with the stipulation that they get with the City of McDonough to confirm they don't have any problem where y'all actually put the statue around that area where you're talking about. I noticed some electrical lines and some water lines, so just getting it, get with the city and make sure you have their place.
So where I understand your motion, Henry County is gonna vote on not objecting to this contingent upon the City of McDonough approving it. Okay, we have a motion from District Three.
Second.
Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we have a, under Splash Resolution Question of Approval of the Purchase and or Installation of Police Vehicle Equipment for Fifteen Vehicles as filed, Mr. Ron Burke Carter.
Good morning.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. The following six resolutions are in reference to the fifteen police patrol vehicles that were purchased in a previous resolution. The first resolution is to enter into a contract with law enforcement supply, which is an annual contract we have for the outfitting of the vehicles in the amount of thirty thousand six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars and twenty-five cents, and a breakdown of, it's included in the resolution, which would include, and I'm paraphrasing here, the door hand, the bars that go on the back doors, the computer stands, and miscellaneous accessories that are needed to outfit the police vehicles.
Anybody have any questions or comment? You got a resolution in the books, I'd like to consider moving in that direction?
So move.
Have a motion from District Three?
Second.
Second from District Two, yes, was it, no, excuse me, five. Any further discussion? All in favor of the resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of installation of police vehicle for fifteen twenty-fourteen Dodge Chargers from the Henry County Police Department from Splash Four Fund in the amount thirty thousand eight, correction, thirty thousand six eighty-nine twenty-five. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
The next resolution that's in your book is for the mobile radios. These are individual resolutions, because each one of these are individual, separate vendors. This is for the mobile radios that, with Loudon Communication, which is a GSA contract in the amount of fifty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Have a resolution by the Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of fifteen mobile radios for the Henry County Police Department, and that would be in the total cost of fifty-nine thousand four seventy-five. Somebody moves in that direction?
So move.
Have a motion from District One. Second from District Three, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, a motion, same sign. Thank you.
The next resolution is for the, for purchasing fifteen laser systems for the police vehicles. The police department uses Pro-Laser LiDAR laser system. The vendor is Lakota Contracting. There's a GSA contract, a federal contract, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Have a resolution in the book, the Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of fifteen laser systems for the Henry County Police Department using Splash Four Fund in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven seventy-five.
So move.
Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second.
Second from, I'm sorry, was that District Five? Second from District Five, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
The next resolution is for the radar system. The contract will be with Decatur Electronics. It's a GSA contract, twenty-eight thousand five hundred and forty dollars and thirty-five cents.
Have a resolution, Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of fifteen radar systems for the Henry County Police Department using Splash Four Fund in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five forty and thirty-five cents. Does somebody move in that direction? Have a motion District Three? Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, a motion, same sign. So move.
The next resolution is for fifteen laptop computers. This is on state contract. The vendor is CDW-G. Total cost is forty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Have a resolution in the book. The resolution to Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of fifteen laptop computers for the Henry County Police Department using Splash Four Fund in the amount of forty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second from District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
The last resolution for outfitting the police vehicles is purchasing fifteen digital in-car video systems. The vendor is Digital Ally, and the amount is sixty-six thousand twenty dollars.
Have a resolution in the board, in the book, from the Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of fifteen digital in-car video systems for the Henry County Police Department using Splash Four Fund in the amount of sixty-six thousand twenty dollars and no cents.
So move.
Have a motion District One. Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you so much. Next, have a resolution question award of an RFP for the design of Jodico Road at Black Hall Road. Mr. Romero, this is a Splash program. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members. Splash Four was approved by the voters in November of 2013. Jodico Road at Black Hall Road is a designated Splash Four Priority One project. The BOC entered into a project framework agreement, or PFA, with Georgia Department of Transportation on April seventh, 2014, per Resolution thirteen dash two ninety-five. Preliminary engineering per the PFA Attachment A, federal participation will be a hundred fourteen thousand dollars and four hundred, a hundred fourteen thousand dollars four hundred. The county participation will be twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars for a grand total of a hundred forty-three thousand dollars for design only. Purchasing, the purchasing department issued a request for proposal, RFP number fourteen dash thirty-four dash S P. Thirteen proposals were received and reviewed by a committee of Henry County Planning and Engineering Staff Professionals. The committee reviewed all submitted proposals, and all proposals were scored and ranked. The committee shortlisted and interviewed the top three firms. The first two firms could not provide the services within the proposed budget. Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated provided a fee for the design of Jodico Road at Black Hall Road in the amount of a hundred forty-two thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars, which is below the proposed budget. Georgia DOT will reimburse the county a hundred fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents, and Henry County is responsible for twenty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty cents. Funding for the engineering services is available within the project account. Splash staff recommends approval of the RFP number fourteen dash thirty-four dash S P for the engineering design for Jodico Black Hall to Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. I'll take any questions.
Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book, Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the engineering design for Jodico at Black Hall Road with Heath and Lineback Engineering. The total amount will be a hundred forty-two nine eighteen. At the end of the project, the Georgia Department of Transportation will reimburse the county a hundred fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents, and Henry County's total responsibility at the end will be twenty-eight thousand five eighty-three sixty.
This is approved.
Have a motion District Two, approved. Second from Five, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, a motion, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution awarding a bid for a cement stabilized base reclamation construction. Rocky Romero, and also Terry is up there as well, too. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. As part of this Plus Four list of roads that are to be resurfaced, we have District One, Two, and Four resurfacing and widening and resurface treatment projects approved by the board to use annual contracts per Resolution fourteen dash one ninety-five. Henry County DOT will be performing the work of seven of these roads for Splash with DOT forces.
One of these roads, Commissioners, is Peaksville Road, which is not a Splash project, but we bid this one out, we put it in the bid package with the others so we could get a better price. So what you have is a package that has mostly all Splash road, with one of them being a DOT road. The road here is Peaksville Road. We put it in there because when New Hope was paved, a lot of truck traffic tore up a section of that road. So the best way to repair that road is to use full-depth reclamation. So to get the economy of scale, we included it in there. So this morning, what we're actually asking to do is award the contract to Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-five cent. Of that contract, it's gonna be paid for into two pieces. Forty-five thousand ninety-four dollars and forty-seven cents will go toward Peaksville Road, and that will be paid out of the DOT budget. The remainder of the contract, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-eight cent, will be paid for out of Splash Four. So we didn't want to confuse it, but we did want to take advantage of getting a good price on this. If we'd have did this standalone, the price would not, I assure you, would not have been nearly as what it would have been if we included it in a package. So, Rocky would be happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Let me ask you this. We have to be very cautious about co-mingling general funding money, money and Splash money, so this is gonna be designed in such a way that there will be no appearance of any co-mingling of Splash funds with regular DOT money. Would that be a correct statement?
We will both get our POs, and it'll be separated. Everything, you know, they will get POs for their portion of the work, which means it'll be paid out of Splash, that'll come from the Splash Office. My work, that portion of it will be paid for out of the DOT. So that's why the, you know, that's why we even wanted it in the resolution, you know, to make it clear that this contract's gonna be split and paid for out of two pockets of money. That's, that's the reason we won award, but kind of mentioned in the resolution how it's gonna be paid for, so we can make it clear.
Okay, does anybody like to, like to comment or move in that direction? Have a resolution, the Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for cement stabilized base reclamation construction. Have a motion from District Four, second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, a motion, raise your right hand. Well, drop your gavel. Thank you so much. Public Works Resolution Question Acceptance of a Proposed Extension of Cleveland Farm Road as a Public Road with Right-of-Way. Terry.
Morning, Chairman, Board Members. The request this morning is to obtain BOC approval for acceptance of a proposed extension of Cleveland Farm Road, including a cul-de-sac, and this extension being accepted as a public road with right-of-way being conveyed. Currently, Cleveland Farm Road is a county-maintained public road that intersects with Peaksville Road and extends northward to a dead end. So that would be from, here is Peaksville, and it currently ends right here at Landlot Line. So the extension that we're talking about is from this landlot north. The county accepted Cleveland Farm Road as a county road in the direction of county administrator in June of nineteen ninety-one, after receiving multiple letters from residents in the area stating that the road had been maintained consistently in the past by the county. Per the GDOT roadway inventory, the length of the road is point three five miles in length, and that would carry you up to that landlot line that I pointed out just a minute ago. The county has been maintaining the gravel road to the last residential driveway, which is somewhere about in this area right here. So this area hasn't received much attention for the road, because there was no need in gravelling it, maintaining it, there was no home pass that location. The owner of the property that adjoins the existing Cleveland Farm Road to the east, as well as the portion of the property north of this southern landlot line of, Landlot Line two twenty-two, is proposing to donate right-of-way along the frontage of the existing Cleveland Farm Road up to Landlot two twenty-two, as well as provide right-of-way for the extension of the Cleveland Farm Road north of Landlot two twenty-two, which includes right-of-way for a cul-de-sac. So the property owner, right now, from here to the landlot line, we only have a prescriptive easement, and that prescriptive easement, mind you, is only whatever we've been maintaining, which is a very narrow strip. The owner proposes to deed us, I believe, fifty foot of additional right-of-way on the right-hand side of that road, or on the east side of it. A strip that's fifty foot long and nearly, I think it's around eighteen hundred, two thousand feet long. And then additionally donate right-of-way up through here and enough to place a cul-de-sac at the north end. So what we will be receiving is actual deeded right-of-way. We'll end up with right-of-way on the whole section of road. Right now, we only have prescriptive easement. So not only are they gonna deed right-of-way on the extension, but on the existing part as well, they're gonna deed us fifty foot there as well. The owner will also place gravel for the roadway surface of Cleveland Farm Road north of the portion that the county has been maintaining, similar to the width as the county has been maintaining, as well as grade and place a gravel base for the extension of the road, including the cul-de-sac. So on the extension, he will be gravelling, grading, and directing, or placing gravel in that location. Due to the existing width of Cleveland Farm Road, which is approximately ten foot in width, the owner will also place three pullover areas, approximately ten foot in width, forty foot in length, with a gravel surface four to six inches in depth along the roadway to provide for better areas along the roadway for motors to pass one another along this road. So this one's a little bit unique, so what we're asking the board to do is accept that extension as part of a county road. Now, what they intend to do is to, is to break that up into three parcels. One parcel would be on this side up to the first here, so this area along this area is one parcel. This area along this line is the second. The third parcel would be this area here. The third parcel would be this area here. One of the reasons the extension of the cul-de-sac was necessary is to get their frontages unacceptable in line with what our code says they have to have frontage on a, on a roadway. So all this meets all those standards. So that's kind of the whole, whole package. I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have on this.
So you're talking to, I'm sorry, are you on the floor, District One? Let me ask you this. Eventually, the, the owner of this, is what we've shown here, wants to give us additional 50 feet. So that means that we lay prescription on 10 feet, if I read this correctly. That would be 60 feet. So that means you could put a standard road without curving gutters on a 60-foot right-of-way. Would that be correct?
We, we would have 50 foot deeded right-of-way and 10, or whatever the prescriptive is, on the west side of the road.
So that would equal?
Approximately 60 feet.
Okay. Now, if, I, I'm just saying, I think I can see why somebody, the owner of that wants this. Number one, he's not landlocked. He's got frontage right there on that street that goes in front of it, whatever street that is. Anyway, he is, he's kind of got a, a big flag lot. So if and when somewhere down the road, somebody develops a subdivision in, in three segments, phase one, two, and three, what I can visualize this, then I think that if, if the board is going to consider this, is put some stipulation in the resolution that would mandate that if and when it's ever paved for that reason, then these people would obligate to make a contribution towards the payment of that street. Could that be a fair assessment? I just, since it's worked all these years, I don't see why the, the owner all of a sudden says, "I'm going to give you 50 more feet."
Well, here's what, let me tell you, there's, 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 there's two options of what could happen with this property. One of them is we don't allow for the extension. Then what they could, they could do is make three flag lots, like you're saying, that would go up and serve the back. Now, it's actually three options. They could do that. They could, they could have flags that start down here at Peaksville Road, and a flag here, and another one that comes back. Or likely since, now remember, all of this is a, is a public road right here. They could come off with some real weird-looking flags right here and still split this into three pieces and just have 60 foot of frontage come off of this last section and make some weird little angles that cut back in. So you could end up with flags coming off, two flags off the back end. Now, this parcel has frontage all the way down this entire side, because this is all the county road existing today. So if it had frontage, they could do two flags off this very end and then still serve these two lots back here. And not give us any right-of-way at all. So you still could end up with three parcels with some weird little flags out there at the end of it. Now, if, if they ever want to develop one of those tracks into a subdivision, then they would have to pave the entire road. Now, if, if the county elected to pave this road, I would think, I don't, I mean, we would just pave it like we would any other dirt road. I don't know that we, you know, we, I guess that's something the board could, could ask for if they wanted, if we paved it. But I think what I, I really struggled with this one a lot, and what I ended up with is if they end up doing flag lots right at the end of it and don't give us any right-of-way, right now, I don't have a way for a fire engine, a school bus, or anything like that to turn around. I, I'd be in kind of rough shape. Then if we ended up wanting to make improvements to that road whenever, then we would have to acquire the very right-of-way that they're willing to donate today. Again, two ways to look at it, but that's.
I would not have a problem with this, but I just want to spread across the minutes that, that if and when this happens and somebody wants to develop it into a subdivision or three subdivisions, that they would be expected to, the county to expect them to pay, if not all, at least the majority, the cost of the improvement of that road. I just want to spread it across the minutes. I haven't said that. That's the only question I have. Are you on the floor, District One?
That's basically what I would say. Terry, did, you know, when we went out there with that gentleman? Didn't we agree that if the new property owners would let us shift it over 50 feet? Is those telephone poles going to create a problem when we looked at?
Yes, sir, there is. Right now, there's, I believe there's three telephone poles that, once we accept that property to the east, there's three poles that would be in that right-of-way, just about dead center of it, that if we elected to improve that road, those three power poles would have to be moved at that time. So right now, the roads, the poles are just to the right of that existing prescriptive easement, like 15, 20 feet. So when you give 50 foot of right-of-way, obviously about where the poles are now is where the center of that right-of-way would be. And it would require, if we improve that road, it would require relocating those poles.
The property owner be responsible for relocating this stuff?
No. If, if we accept the right-of-way, if, if we, today, if we accept the right-of-way with the poles in it, the poles already have their easement in place. So they have priority over us. So if we accept the right-of-way and our right-of-way is given after the, after the power easement's given, then we, the county, would have to pay for those poles to be relocated. Now, if you want to put in a stipulation that before we accept the right-of-way, that they have to move those poles, I mean, that, that's some, that's an option for the board. If you want to say, "We're not going to accept this till they move the pole," I would probably have to ask Rocky, but some of those poles probably costing, what, minimum $5,000? Between $5,000 and $10,000 apiece to move. You've got three of them, that's $30,000. I can't speak for the owner, but they would probably not want to give us that right-of-way. I mean, we, we have a representative here today, if you want to ask him any questions, but that would probably dampen their spirits a little bit about donating the right-of-way and moving the poles. Did I answer your question, sir?
Yeah. Thank you.
The only other comment I would make, I, looking at the sheet here, it appears that normally when we go through something like this, legal counsel reviews this, and I noticed that legal counsel has not reviewed this. So I would suggest that we consider tabling this until such time it can go to legal review and let Mr. Jockstetter look at it and advise us as to how we can put stipulations in that at such time they want to do certain things, we can, we'll already have it worked out before we take the right-of-way.
Chairman, I might be able to answer a couple of questions right now. With respect to your comment that a condition be imposed that if the road is ever paved, that the owner or developer contribute a portion of it, I, I don't think you can do that today. I think that would be illegal impact fee to do that today. You might be able to do it at a later date in connection with the rezoning or something along those lines, but today, I don't think it'd be proper to do it. With respect to moving the telephone poles, I think Mr. McMichael's proposed solution, if, if the cost of moving the telephone poles is an issue, I think you have, really, you have two options. Either require them to be done before you accept the right-of-way, or what the board should remember is whether or not that road gets paved is always going to be determined by the six people sitting in your chairs. So if the conditions of paving that road are unacceptable to the board, whether it's this board or another board, they can just decline to pave the road. There's no obligation that that road ever be paved on the county's part. So it, if, if accepting the right-of-way solves some problems that Mr. McMichael has, you, you certainly could say, "We will accept the right-of-way after such time as the telephone poles have moved." Or you could accept them with the poles where they are, and just everybody remember, if, if that road ever gets paved, or if someone wants that road to get paved, you can always say no. And that's the, that's the simple solution to it.
So what you're saying, it, it would be in Henry County's best interest if we just tabled this or set on it until such time somebody seeks rezoning, because that, that way, you could make that a condition of rezoning.
I think, I think you could probably make that a condition of rezoning. It's probably a condition, already a condition of development. I don't think they could develop up there without that road being paved.
The cart in front of the horse. Would that be correct? Like you just said, once we accept the right-of-way, then it, it doesn't become a condition or consideration for rezoning.
Well, still, somebody has to pave it. I mean, just because you own the right-of-way doesn't obligate the county to pave any road. You know, the county probably owns a lot of right-of-way that hasn't been paved yet.
Let, let me draw your attention to a couple of things. One of them is in the resolution, and now therefore, we say through the acceptance of this deed, Henry County accepts this as a county road, but only agrees to maintain said road, not to immediately provide any capital improvement such as paving. So we want to make it crystal clear that we're accepting this as a county road. We're not, we're not making any promises about any paving. If they want to develop it as a subdivision, it is a requirement of the subdivision that they would have to improve that road, pave it back to the nearest paved county road. So if they plan on developing any of those pieces along there, you know, then it would require them to pave it. The, the, the other thing I know, Chairman, just to, so keep y'all fully informed, is we have been dealing with this about, I don't know, David, three months, four months? Three or four months trying to figure out what we're going to do. The owners have already purchased this property, and they're ready to move ahead with building their homes. So I think there's some, they're pretty well ready to go forward with doing that. I think if, you know, our option seems to be either accept it or right-of-way, or they'll go about, you know, getting a permit however they want, however they need to, to build a home, which may be including doing some of those flag lot deals to make it work. But I've, from the information I have received from them, that they're, they're ready to move forward, you know, with doing this. So again, the board certainly can postpone if it chooses, but there is some desire from the owners to, you know, see how they need to proceed.
Basically, what you're saying, you, you've got one owner that's going to have built homes for three families, so to speak. Is that, is that your understanding?
We'll get that answered. I want to make sure if it's deeded in three different names or one name or?
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Alex Mitchum. I'm here on behalf of the owner, the Johnson family. They purchased this. It's kind of a friend of our, our firm. I work for Falcon Design. We did surveying and engineering, that sort of thing. And they're a friend of ours, and we advised them about the, the right-of-way here, and as such. Terry's right, you know, it isn't a right to do the flag lots, like you were speaking of. That's just not the clean way of doing this. And this is three families. I think it's two brothers and, and their mother or something wanting to build three homes. So that's what the situation is. And we've been working with Terry and David on this for a couple of months, and they've been really good to us. And, yeah, they're right. They're, they're ready to move forward. They're ready to pull the permits and build their homes. And I think we also agreed that we understand the road's not going to be improved, and we agreed to gravel some areas, like some, you know, little bump outs or whatever, that way they can pass through. And that's the one thing about Cleveland Farm Road, is that it, it looks like a driveway as it is right now to a point, and that's kind of a, one of the attractive things to this family. They don't want it to look like a right-of-way or a road right now. They, you know, they like having it a little bit more secluded, and, you know, it's kind of their own little private area there. So we think in time, yes, it would be, you know, it'd be beneficial for the county to have the right-of-way there, but as we stand today, again, we thought this was the cleanest way of doing it, cleanest way of dividing the property versus having to do the flag lots and long driveways and that sort of thing. So that's, it's a cost savings on the family as well.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we have a resolution in the book. Board of Commissioners providing approval of staff to accept the extension of Cleveland Road Farm for the Henry County Department of Transportation. We have a motion from District One. Second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Public Safety Resolution Requesting Approval to Purchase an Undercover Vehicle and Authorization to Use Seized and Asset Forfeiture Funds. Good morning, Major.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This resolution's in reference to the author, requesting authorization to use narcotics seized in asset forfeiture funds to purchase one undercover narcotics vehicle for use by our agent that is assigned currently to the Narcotics Task Force up in Atlanta. Henry County Police Department, as well as Henry County Government, has been active partner with the U.S. Drug Enforcement Agency for many years. Police Department provides DEA, the DEA with one special agent from our local Narcotics Task Force. This special agent works with DEA to identify and investigate long-term drug cartels, as well as any narcotics that are operating in and around the metro Atlanta area. These investigations are long-term investigations, and they require a lot, an extensive amount of surveillance at times. The request is to purchase this vehicle, $29,574.39. We went through the Henry County Purchasing Department and received a participating member quote, I'm sorry, in reference to NJPA, which is a public agency that serves as a member-focused cooperative for over 50,000 member agencies nationally. The contracted products, as well as equipment and services, opportunities to educate and government entities throughout the country. We're requesting to utilize $29,574.39 to purchase this vehicle.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution by the Board of Commissioners authorizing expenditure of $29,574.39 from the Henry County Police Department seized funds and asset forfeiture account for the purchase of an undercover vehicle. If somebody move in that direction. Have a motion District Four, second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you, Major.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a resolution requesting acceptance of an amendment to the 2014 CSPG. Is that CSPG?
Yes, Department of Human Services CSPG funding.
CSPG program contract. Ms. Lee, good morning.
Good morning. As stated, I'm here to request approval for an amendment to the 2014 contract. The increase in funding will be $5,696 to use in our programs.
Any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book. Henry County Board of Commissioners for authorization to accept an amendment to the Community Service Block Grant Contract for Fiscal Year 2014, and it would be an amount of $5,696. So move. Have a motion District Three. Second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one, we've got a transit, and before we move, I want to make a correction. The resolution states, it says, "Resolution on this," the resolution is correct, but this format here is incorrect. Resolution Requesting Authorization to Apply, if you would be so kind, as to change that from apply to accept. This is an accept, not apply. And for the, they got FTA here, and that should be DHS funds. So, Mr. Salter, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. I'm seeking to authorize an to approve contract for DHS 5310 funds to provide transportation for the elderly and disabled individuals through the Georgia Department of Human Services.
We have a resolution, Board of Commissioners pertaining to the Georgia Department of Human Services Coordinated Transportation Grant for elderly persons and persons with disability. And this will be in the amounts, as whereas Henry County Commissioners can collect up to $627,589.48 for transportation fees, whereas the Henry County Commissioners, it's required to provide an in-kind match of $2,889.92 if somebody would consider moving in that direction. So move. Have a motion District Five.
Second.
Second from District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you. Finance Resolution Requesting Approval to Refinance the Jail Agreement. Mr. Alata, good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman of Commissioners. I'm coming for you today to, um, request approval for refinancing of the jail loans, installment agreement loans. The net effect, if we were to go with, um, the existing lender, uh, which is Capital, Capital One, would be a net savings of five hundred, would be a savings of five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Excuse me. Um, I'm gonna throw a little twist at the end and I apologize for in advance and I'll explain when I get to that point. In June 2006, ACCG, Association County Commissioners of Georgia, agreed to acquire the county's 2.361 acres, more or less tract two, together with improvements, uh, basically separate pods and additions to the jail for nine and a half million dollars. ACCG then in turn sold it back to the county pursuant to an installment sales agreement, and ISA is for short, subject to lien and encumbrances of the security deed. Then they assigned the ISA to City Mortgage, uh, who became the lender. The agreement called for interest at four and a half percent and monthly payments of seventy-two thousand, six seventy-five, starting in June of 2006, with the final payment in June of 2021. A first amendment was done in March 31st, 2008, extending the balance of the principal portion that was remaining at the time of eight million, seven sixty-six, nine thirty-nine, with monthly payments extended from the June 2021 to March 23. The rate was changed from four and a half to 3.99 percent and, um, the payments were changed as well. In March of '08, ACCG to acquire a different tract of land, tract four, together with building and other improvements and fixtures, again, separate pods or jail additions, for six million dollars. ACC again sold it back to the county pursuant to an ISA, subject to lien and encumbrances and security date. And then they assigned that to City again, who became the lender, thus making them the lender on both agreements. Um, again, interest at this, on this was also 3.99. Neither ISA is callable before December of '14 and that's a key item to note, uh, December of '14 being a couple of months from now. They can be called in December of '14, December 1st to '14, with a 101 purchase price. Um, they can be paid off if we waited till July of '16 with no 1 percent premium. In Ju, June of 2010, Capital One Public Financing purchased both loans from, uh, City Mortgage. I started discussions earlier this year, somewhere around March or April, to see if, um, Capital One would be willing to refinance the agreement earlier than the December 1st date. And basically, it wasn't until in August, when they finally, mid-August, they came back with an early financing, refinance proposal, reducing the rate from 3.99 percent to 2.85 on both of the loans. This, in doing this, reduces the interest from a million, two eighty-one to a million, eight twenty-one, or a savings of approximately five hundred and forty thousand dollars. They've also agreed to waive the 1 percent refinancing premium that is, that is in the contract, each contract. They did put in there the five-year non-callable provision through October 2019 and then after that, callable at 101 percent. The proposal has no fees or expenses, but we would have to pick up our legal and advisory fees. And speaking with Jim Monisell, County's Bond Counsel, he estimate it would be fifteen thousand dollars to do this. The, since they are allowing this loan to be refinanced earlier than December 1st, they in essence control if the loan will be refinanced earlier than December 1st. And there is no opportunity before then, before that call date, and again, before that 101. Now, what I did last week, since when I presented last time the refinancing of the Nash Farms debt, is I spoke with SunTrust and the reason for that is, as if you recall, they offered a 1.73 percent rate and, uh, but couldn't make the loan work because of the property itself was not what they called, um, county, appropriate county, um, use, for county use. Uh, I'm gonna present to you some documents here and I'll run through them real quick. The first thing I've given you is, um, a term sheet for STI Institutional and Government, Inc. This is an arm of SunTrust Bank. SunTrust Bank is our, uh, bank, the bank that banks us. Also the one, as I said, backed with the Nash Farms, had given us a very good rate. Um, I've given full copies to the attorney and the county clerk. Each of you have the first five pages. The pages you don't have are the amortization schedules for, for proposals, which I'll go over. In your executive summary, you have, um, in, in the package I just gave you, on the left side of the page that I've given you, that's up here on the, uh, overhead, on the left side is what is in the executive summary, as to, at the time I put this together a couple of weeks ago, and saying that, um, we have two options today. One is to accept their proposal to refinance effective October 1st, or wait until December to obtain another proposal to see if the 2.85 rate can be bettered. Uh, in talking with SunTrust, I've managed to get a couple of things put together and they're described here as well, to provide an additional savings. So, again, my apologies, I just got this Friday afternoon, worked this weekend to put the numbers together to give you what I'm presenting today. First thing I said is there are no assurance that Capital One will or can offer the same 2.85 rate in December as interest rates may climb higher. As a result of receiving from SunTrust a lock on their rate of 2.32 percent, we don't need to worry about if or if not, uh, Capital One on December, if they rebid this, will provide us with a lower rate. The second thing, there's no assurance that another lender can offer a rate lower than 2.85, since this is an eight and a half year loan, or three years longer than Nash Farms. And typically, longer term means a higher rate. What I mean by that is when the 1.73 was proposed, it was on a less than a five-year rate, uh, term. This is an eight and a half year term and rates are typically higher the longer the loans are. Secondly, this is loan is about twice the amount of the Nash Farms and bigger loans also will carry a higher rate. In this case, we didn't get the 1.73, but I do have a 2.32 percent rate from the 2.85 from, uh, Capital One. Next point three, if we were able to obtain a lower than 2.8 from another lender, we would be required to pay the 1 percent penalty to refinance the loan with another lender. As of December 1st, if we refinance with, uh, SunTrust or STI, we will have to pay ninety-nine thousand dollars plus for the 1 percent. That is what we'll owe, about 9.9 million dollars as of the 1st of December. The new lenders' cost number four might not be waived. It turns, and I said it could be anywhere from fifteen to thirty thousand dollars more than the present cost that Jim Monisell put together to amend the existing agreements. It turns out that Jim said he can do it for thirty thousand, which is a fifteen thousand dollar increase. Um, oh. Yes?
If you're done, I just want, whenever you're done, I want to ask some questions.
Okay. And the last one, number six. We would lose the interest savings before October, November, December is what I had said, which is about twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. As it turns out, since we can close December 1st, we'll only lose two months of interest, which is nineteen thousand. So, when I put it together, as you have in the schedule there, it turns out that the, uh, total additional cost to go with SunTrust is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand based on the write-up. And I found out there'll be another ten thousand dollars or 10 basis points to go and redo the notes with ACCG. It's about a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So, it is less than what I had proposed of about a hundred and ninety, but it's still a hundred and forty-nine thousand. I, I can go into the next schedules or answer your question now.
Chairman, can I ask a question? Fred, kind of bowling this down into everyday household finances, the way, when I looked at this item, it looked like what's happening is that Capital One is essentially willing to modify our rate. And it, you know, it's, that's, and, and if you refinance your house, when you're going and looking at your mortgage rate with your house, there's two things you can do. You can either call your existing mortgage provider and say, "Hey, will you do what's called a rate modification?" Where they basically agree, "We're gonna keep everything the same except for we're gonna drop your interest rate. You don't have to go do all the legal and recording fees and all the other stuff. We're gonna cut you a, a, a good deal." They usually will do that because they want to keep the business, whereas if you go and do a straight-up refinance, you have to go record the tract, you have to do all the title insurance, you have to do all the, the appraisals and everything else. I know that these are apples and oranges, but I'm just trying to give the, the public an understanding of what you've, what you've put together here. So, it looks like Capital One is willing to drop our rate down to a somewhat competitive rate. It looks like they've put a little bit of a premium in there because they know if we go and do a full refinance, there's a hundred thousand dollar payment that we're going to have to make to them, plus there's also going to be some additional costs for underwriting as well as advisor fees and so forth. So, summing it up, it looks like if we wait and take the gamble for December, there might be additional savings, but we're gonna incur three years' worth of those savings just to even have that chance because of the prepayment of a hundred thousand dollars that we have to pay them, plus the, the additional advisor fees and so forth. Does that kind of sum it up to a degree?
All but the last part, I believe, uh, and it may, may be correct, the last part. Uh, and that is, as, as mentioned earlier, the, um, they're in control alone, just as you said, until it can be refinanced. You can't do anything till then. The gamble till December 1st is a gamble unless you have a locked-in rate that on December 1st you can live with. SunTrust or STI, DI or STI, I guess, has come up with a rate that they're locking in until December 1st. So, we're not gambling. We actually have a rate come December 1st when the note is call, the installment loans are callable. So, there is no gamble in that. We get the 2.32 rate, uh, without having to be concerned. Okay? Is that clarified?
So, what's your, I mean, and I, if you have more to present, I did see when you just gave us this executive summary, there's something, talking about the event of taxability and these other things that were highlighted in the revenues test. Any of that should be concerned, or is that...
No, all that's in the existing agreements. They're in the existing agreements. Basically, they're, they're, now, I do have, I did have Jim Monisell. I just got that Friday. I sent it on to him. He wasn't there. He looked at it this morning. I just got an email back. He did have some issues and for Patrick's sake, um, he had some issues and SunTrust has asked him to strike through and change loan to be installment loan, so it's properly worded and SunTrust doesn't have a, a problem with that. So, the term sheet that I have at the present time, that again, I received Friday, will be changed by Jim Monisell to make sure it's appropriate for the lending, uh, and an installment sales and the wording accordingly. Everything else stays the same, it's just some legal stuff that needs to be taken care of.
So, what is your recommendation? Is it to go, to consider taking the SunTrust since it's a better rate than what Capital One, or are you recommending taking the Capital One?
I'm recommending we go with SunTrust. There is savings, as, as you mentioned. This schedule here shows, there's two types of savings. One is cash flow and the other is interest. And this schedule points out that with a 2.32 rate versus the 2.9, uh, 8.5 rate versus the original existing note of two, uh, 3.99, I've done this by year for a reason and that is, you don't get all the savings in year one. It's gonna be over the life of the loan. So, from a budget standpoint, since the county and government is on a cash basis in their budgeting, the savings will accrue based on the payments we make. So, any reduction in payments will help the annual budget. What this shows is that in 2015, um, the annual interest savings in 2015, whether we go with one or the other, is in the ninety-two to ninety-four thousand dollar range. You can see the interest rises to the point where, under four different scenarios, and the four scenarios are, number one, with the, I've either financed the closing cost so that we don't have to pay it out in cash, because if we do, it affects the yearly budget this year with that a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Or if we, and if we roll it in, that's the finance side. And then the other is I used what was the payment rate that was given to us at the 2.85 percent from Capital One, saying, "Well, let's pay the same thing they offered to pay." And the loan gets paid off earlier in one case than what they had. Or the other one is that, uh, we amortize it over the hundred months, which was the life of the loan anyways. You can see the four different scenarios, basically going from a 779,000 dollar reduction in interest to a 741,000. So, uh, not a lot of money based on 700 and some thousand, but as you can see, based on the scenarios, it does change. SunTrust does have the additional 130,000 in closing cost. Uh, there's a net savings, uh, with SunTrust of 649, uh, to 611,000. Capital One, as it presented in, in what you had in your original folder, was 539. So, there's an additional 109 to 71,000 dollars by going with SunTrust and that is, again, all-inclusive net of costs that we have to pay. The second page that's attached to that is to distinguish between interest savings and cash savings, and this is the critical part for budgetary reasons. From the payments in 2015, we'll save 37 to 41,000 dollars based on whether it's financed, rolling in the financing or not. But in year one, we will have, if we don't roll the financing in, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in cost, the 130 plus Jim Monisell's 15. So, this year's budget would be negatively affected by 108,000 and 92,000, even though overall, we've got this big savings. Under the other two scenarios, we have a savings of 37 and 41,000. Bottom line is, you can see the, the cash saved per year totaling the 630 to 596,000. Same differences as the prior schedule. And again, the difference being the closing cost either in year one or quite frankly, in year five, or it's, or eight, rather, when the loan is paid off. So, from a budgeting standpoint, you can either amortize it and get some of that savings each year, or you can take the whole hit. My recommendation would be to take the amortized rate, the last column, amortized rate, and roll the, roll the, um, closing cost in and end up with the net savings of, uh, 596,000 versus the 540. I also attached a resolution to pick which of ones you want, if you want to go with SunTrust or STI. And then you have the, uh, resolution that was in the package, if you wish to go with Capital One.
Uh, the only concerns I have, number one, is with the resolution that I studied, which is in the book, we had access to, uh, everything looks like it's kind of verbatim until you get down to where it says, um, uh, one, two, three, four, the, the fifth whereas in the original agreement, it talks about, uh, refinancing the ISA effective October 1st, 2014, 2.85. Uh, now, I'm assuming that was with, with Capital. Is that, is that a correct statement? That, that doesn't...
The one that's in the, uh, board package was, was the res...
Original resolution. And then, now we got a multiple choice, so...
Correct.
I, I established in my mind, I thought basically what I read, the best, in my mind, would be, go, stay with Capital. But now, we, we can, we have to pick and choose one of four, uh, on the, uh, one, two, three, where it takes a place. The new resolution, whereas number five takes a place at the whereas number five, and this where it gets, which one is SunTrust and which one is Capital?
The new one I gave you today is 100 percent SunTrust, STI. The other resolution is only regarding Capital One.
So, we only getting choices of SunTrust, right?
Yes, sir. That's the only ones there. Yes, sir. That's the only ones there are SunTrust.
Okay. So if we, if we approve this resolution, then we, we have to pick one of the four, but it's SunTrust, SunTrust exclusively. So how would we, for those that might want to consider going with Capital, what resolution would we use for that? The one that's in the book now?
Yes, sir.
So we have two resolutions. This one, basically, is SunTrust. The one, the original one, is, is Capital One.
Yes, sir.
So there, there's little or no risk with Capital. There is some risk that we may save money with SunTrust. Is that the bottom line?
The risk, the risk is removed with SunTrust, because the rate is locked in until December first. There is, that, we, as long as we give them notice by the fifteenth and close by the first, there is no risk. We will get the two-point-three-two rate.
So you're saying there's no risk to go with SunTrust?
No, sir.
Now, having said that, which one would we put the X in on the force available to us to ensure that this is, that, that we going with the SunTrust with, with no, no risk? Which one would we pick there?
All four of them are without risk. There's just a difference in savings, additional savings over the Capital One. I propose that we do the roll-in of the cost, one hundred and forty-five thousand dollar closing cost, and still net with another sixty, seventy thousand dollars worth of savings.
Yeah, you said that, but I don't see one hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
That could be number, number four.
That would be the one that says that nine million, nine hundred and-
I'm sorry, ten million, the ten million, the second one, ten million, oh fifty-four, which includes the financing cost.
Okay, that would be the one hundred and ten, seven eighty-
Yes.
Seventy-five. So-
Fred, because the monthly payments are higher, since you're rolling the, the cost in?
That'd be the second one, sir. Take a look at the last-
Oh, I see, I see the difference, to the second payment.
Second one. It's a lesser payment, which brings, derives greater cash flow.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Mr., go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, this, this reminds me of, we, and I hate, but I think it, it's easier for the public to understand, thinking about this in their mortgage, when you're talking about the biggest debt that you have, when you're looking at refinancing, is you, you have to kind of do a break-even analysis on, okay, if there's, if you're going to have to pay a few thousand dollars to either get extra points, or to get, you know, to get a lower interest rate when you do a mortgage, you try to figure out, how many years do I have to live in the house before I actually start making more money off of getting the lower interest rate? That's what happens when you buy points on a, on a refinance. We're a little different, like, we're government, is that we know we're going to have these buildings forever. I mean, this is not like where you have to make the judgment, then the break-even analysis to say, do we, are we going to live in this long enough to recoup the cost? We have to come out of pocket now. We are obviously going to be in this building for longer than the three years that it looks like it would take to recoup. Three to four years, it's right in between the three to four-year mark, we'll recoup these fees. So I see why you're saying that the SunTrust, and I kind of agree, because with as tight as the budget is, we don't want to incur the additional fees on the front end. It's easier probably just to roll it in, especially with these historically low interest rates. So I, I think your, your, your logic's very sound and good on your thought process on this, Fred, for doing the SunTrust, and then amateurizing the, the cost into it, since we're getting a, you know, close to a half a percent savings over what Capital One could do.
And again, I apologize for, for not having this to you before today. I knew it was on. Problem is, as I said, SunTrust couldn't come up with anything affirmative reviewing the agreement, coming up with something, making sure they'd get a better rate until Friday afternoon, like I said. So by the time I ran the numbers, the best I could do is bring it to the board today, and don't want to confuse everybody. It is, you know, with four proposals, but trying to show you, again, interest savings and cash flow problems, or opportunities, as, as Commissioner Preston has mentioned, to make sure we don't mess up the budget for this year at the same time.
And then the other thing is that most people, when you, when you go and you lock in a rate, they'll give you forty-five days, even sometimes sixty days on your rate lock. They don't want to go anything above that, because there's risk with interest rates. And as y'all know, we're kind of on that, that balancing beam, where the Federal Reserve is, is very much starting to pound the drum, that they're, they're predicting that over the coming year, they're going to start raising interest rates. The quantitative easing and all the things where they've done to artificially hold interest rates as low as they have is about to, the music's going to stop on that. So it is very likely, between now and the end of the year, you will start to see rates start to creep up, just in anticipation of the rates that will change in 2015. So for SunTrust to come in and give us a four-month lock, essentially, or three-month lock, is, is, is worth a quarter of a percent right there, because that's, that's pretty strong.
They, again, that was one of the reasons, when I wrote this up, I said, the odds of getting somebody else or waiting and risking was, was slim. But when I called SunTrust and said, hey, look, you offered a one-seven-three, I know there's some issues, can you, and then they said, well, we'll do a lock. We don't typically do sixty, more than sixty. If we can get ninety, we'll give it to you and get the rate and help out. They've been very, very cooperative, obviously, to try to be, to get the loan, save the county money. And the end result is, like I said, the best I could do is bring it here this morning. And again, my apologies for the last-minute presentation on it. But it does save the county, as I said, about another seventy thousand dollars. The number two on the resolution, financed a million, oh fifty-four, which includes the one hundred and forty-five thousand closing cost, and the payment being one hundred and ten, six seventy-eight, seventy-five. Basically, the lesser payment.
The only other question I have is that, I, I know we had a resolution just previously that the chairman brought up, that Patrick had not had a chance to look at it. Since we have outside bond counsel, is this falling a separate umbrella than that, or do we need to make sure Patrick has had time to?
I, I, I'd say, Patrick, to look at it. I had Jim Monisell over the week, and I called him Friday and told him, I sent it to him. He said he reviewed it this morning. I got an email confirmation today, that the resolution looks okay. The, the agreement, again, had some issues, that he called Charlene, and he wrote me back and said, he talked to Charlene. Charlene asked him to, to mark it up, send it back to her. She'll take care of getting it changed into us. And then the other was, I asked for confirmation. I've read the language, didn't want to play lawyer, but when I read the language of the agreements, it said we can early pay, if you would, December first. I didn't, I wanted to make sure it wasn't December thirty-first, and he's confirmed December first with the thirty-day prior notice, November first, to make it December first close.
What time do we have to notify somebody of this? What, what's the timetable?
According to SunTrust's agreement, or STI's agreement, I believe it says by the fifteenth of this month, September.
I saw it, I saw it, September fifteenth as well. But we don't have another meeting. When's the next meeting?
You have to accept it by the fifteenth for that deal to be in place.
Okay. Let me ask you this. Would the board be amenable to considering the resolution of proven refinance? And the, the original, the original resolution states that Capital One public funding, so that was, that was in there. But in this, it makes no mention of, of SunTrust. So is that, how, is it, do we need to put SunTrust, like, I'm, I, I would go along with putting X in, finance ten million dollars at number two, which would be a, a one hundred and ten thousand, six eighty-seven, seventy-five, and then the monthly would be a one hundred and ten, six seventy-eight, twenty-one. But it doesn't say SunTrust. Also-
The, the proposal is from STI Institution, which is a SunTrust-
I know, but that's-
-city here, or something that does the financing.
Is that a given? If we move this, it says nothing about, it just, it just mentions the, it still mentions Capital One public funding, purchased it.
No, the second one, it's STI, the one that I've given at the top. Did I miss it?
No, no, the second one, one, two, three. The third one down says Capital. See the third whereas?
Yep. Those are, those are describing the history of the loan.
I, I would, I would vote for this, contingent upon legal counsel reviewing it. And he could do that and, and sign off on it, which he's not signed off here. And that would make me feel good, if Patrick would look at it. And still, we could, if, if he approved it, obviously, we could meet the deadlines, owner before, and we could just, all this would be valid. But if he didn't, if he found something in there he didn't like, then we'd have to have a call meeting, was going to meet requirements for the fifteenth. I would feel real good about that. Does anybody feel good with that? Just approve this resolution here, contingent upon legal review by the Patrick Jogstetter, and just leave it at that, contingent upon. If he, if, if he found nothing wrong with it, that, that gives the clerk and the chairman the right to execute any and all documents that's happened. So if somebody would do that, I'm, I'm happy with number two, if that's what the board wants to do. But somebody else throw something out for comment.
If nobody else has anything, I'll move to approve that we go with the second resolution with option two, with the contingencies that the chairman mentioned, which would just make sure that we gave legal counsel, our local legal counsel, enough time just to review before the September fifteenth deadline, so you could sign off on the resolution upon meeting the contingency.
Okay. That, that, that is a resolution that's not in the book. We need to let everybody know that we, we have a new resolution that he's making reference to. So having said that, I have a motion, District Two.
Sorry.
Second District Three, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution request approval, having amended and restated airport ground lease. Does this mean we're going to start getting money?
I wish.
Yeah.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. As Chairman Smith has indicated, there's two items before you this morning. They both are pretty much the same thing, but they are two separate lease agreements. As you all will recall, in August twenty-eleven, the county acquired what was formerly known as Terrifield Airport, which is now the Henry County Airport. As a result of us acquiring those airports, we also inherited some lease agreements. Based on consultation with Wells Fargo and our legal team, it was determined that those lease agreements were not economically viable for the county. So in consultation, both attorneys worked together to revise, restate, and amend the, the agreements. Based on the information that has been provided, both legal councils do believe that the documents that are prepared for you all today will create an economically viable lease agreement, and at the same time, will address any and all agreements and things that are in place as far as FAA is concerned. I'll be more than happy to try to answer any questions regarding the agreements. And again, they're two separate ones, but they say the exact same thing. The first one is for lots twenty-two through twenty-five, and then the final agreement is for lot twenty-six.
Has this been reviewed by legal counsel?
Yes, sir, it was reviewed. I actually received the contractual agreements from previous legal counsel.
Okay. We have a resolution in the book, a resolution in the County Board of Commissioners approved and amended and restated airport ground lease agreements for lots twenty-two through twenty-five between Mac Wether Realty Partners LLC acting as a corner partner receiving the property of Detective F. K. F. Storage LLC, set forth in consent order approving receiver dated filed April the second, twenty-fourteen, in the office of the Kirkshire Court, Henry County Civil Action Number fourteen dash C V dash zero-nine-two-seven Alpha Mac, for space at the Henry County Airport, FKA Atlanta Southern Regional Inn, Henry County, Georgia. Does somebody move in that direction?
Please approve.
Have a motion for the resolution. Have a second. I have a motion from District Two, Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you. Now we're moving just for lot twenty-six. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir. Same information, but this is, again, for just lot twenty-six.
It's the same as you just presented, except it's lot twenty-six.
Yes, sir.
Does somebody move that we consider a, a, a different, new, resolution?
Move and approve.
It'd be exactly the same as the previous one, except, said a lot twenty-two dash twenty-five would be lot twenty-six. Only, so we have a motion, District Two.
Say.
Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chairman has no comments? Any commissioner like to make a comment this time for any reason? County managers, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir. I'm going to ask you to, to do two things this morning. The first thing I'll ask you to do is to amend the agenda for the purpose of approving the contracts for the new legal counsel for the county. I have now the contracts in my hands, signed by both firms. I provided this to each of you, a draft, last Monday on the twenty-fifth at five-twenty-six P.M. Receiving no comments back. There have been just minor pen and ink changes that I'll make available to you in a minute. But first, I think I need you to amend the agenda so that I can present these contracts to you for your approval.
Move and approve. Now, and a motion from District Two to amend the agenda to add to contract for outsourcing legal counsel. Have a second from District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Yes, sir.
First, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to welcome Mr. Patrick Jogstetter this morning, sir, for his first day as the general counsel for the county. I have two contracts for your consideration this morning, commissioners. The first is for Patrick Jogstetter, and I think this will get to some of your questions earlier.
Could I get a second?
You, I don't know if you can or not. I suppose we can. Yeah, you can. First is an agreement for legal services for Patrick D. Jogstetter, attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Georgia. Just like to give you some of the highlights of the contract for the commissioners. Mr. Jogstetter will serve as the general counsel to the county, provide legal services to the county in the following matters: attendance at meetings of the Board of Commissioners and other boards and agencies of the county, as directed by the county; provide legal opinions and respond to legal inquiries from members of the Board of Commissioners, the county manager, department heads, constitutional officers, and such employees who are authorized to make inquiries; to draft and review ordinances, resolutions, and policies as requested by the county; the handling in general, all legal matters, not otherwise specifically assigned by the county, to other counsel; for drafting and reviewing contracts and agreements, including contracts for the acquisition of real estate; and representing the Henry County Board of Tax Assessors in all litigation matters related to appeals of ad valorem taxation; and monitor and assist, as necessary, claims handled by the county's insurance carriers; and defending the Henry County Sheriff and civil action file number two-zero-three-one-C-V-three-nine-one-four in the Superior Court of Henry County. Compensation for general services would be a fat, a flat legal, flat fee paid monthly to Mr. Hogst, Jogstetter and his firm, an amount of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars a month. Do you want to approve one at a time, or would you have me do both, Mr. Chairman?
I think it, it would be just to do, do the group, do both at the same time.
We do both at a time? Okay. The second agreement for legal services is the firm of Fincher, Denmark Williams, and Minifield. These attorneys shall serve as litigation counsel to the county. So whereas Mr. Jogstetter is general counsel, the firm of Fincher, Denmark Williams, and Minifield will serve as litigation counsel to the county, provide the following legal services: representation of the county in all litigated matters, including without limitation, eminent domain matters, whether in state or federal court, in mediation, arbitration, administrative hearings, special master hearings, or otherwise; employment litigation, including matters brought before the state of Georgia Department of Labor, United States Equal Opportunity Commission, and the Office of Civil Rights, State Board of Workers Compensation, or any state or federal court; conjunction with the county's insurance defense counsel; challenges to the validity of ordinances, resolutions, or policies the county, as are brought in any state or federal court; challenges to zoning decisions or the denial of any building or developmental permits; any such actions as are brought against the county, its boards of commissioners, employees, constitutional officers in any state or federal court, with exception of representing the Board of Tax Assessors and ad valorem tax appeals, and with the Henry County Sheriff and the civil action I cited earlier. Also, general acquisition of real estate, serve as the local counsel in the issuance of bonds, as directed by the county; acquisition of real estate for sploshed financed projects, and such other matters as are assigned by the county or by a majority of the Board of Commissioners. Compensation for services, these attorneys should be compensated for their legal services at a rate of one hundred and sixty dollars per hour for attorney time and seventy-five dollars per hour for legal time. And there are also some reimbursable expenses for copying, travel expenses at the county rate, expert witness fees, court fees, filing fees, et cetera. Gentlemen, those are the two contracts for the firms the county intends to use for legal services.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
The only thing I want to ask is that, because I- The only thing I want to ask is that, because I've read it, but I just want to make sure we get it out there for the public, is that both of these agreements have a 30-day kick-out provision where if, because I know some people have been concerned, well, if this costs a lot of money, or if somebody's not doing a job that we think is well, there is, that's the beauty of outsourcing, is that you have the accountability function, that you can vote with your feet, and there's a 30-day kick-out, correct?
Yes, commissioners. This agreement shall remain in effect for a period of one year, shall automatically renew for an additional period of one year unless terminated by either party for more than 30 days prior to the end of the term. At all times relevant to this agreement, the attorneys shall serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. At any time by majority vote of the Board of Commissioners, the county may terminate this agreement with 30 days written notice. Likewise, the attorneys shall have the right to terminate this agreement with the county with 30 days written notice in the event the county has either failed to cooperate with any reasonable request or has failed to pay their statements in a timely manner.
How much we have allocated in the budget for legal services in the 2014-2015 budget?
$450,000.
Thank you. Anybody else got any comments or motion?
Move to the room.
Have a motion to approve the two agreements as stated. Have a motion, District Two, second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand to accept these. All opposed, raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
I have no further comments.
Thank you so much. Mr. Jogstadter, first meeting, you have any comments?
I have no comments today.
The upcoming meetings, we've got Tuesday, September 16th, 6:30 PM, a regular board meeting. Tuesday, October 7th, 9:00 AM, the meeting has been canceled. That's the Henry County fall break, if I understand it correctly. Have no other business come before the board at this time. Somebody move, we adjourn.
So, move.
Have a motion, District Three, Second District One. Any further discussion? All indicate they're favored the motion by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So, move. Thank you.